Okay, I'm gonna call it a order the October 14th, 2014 meeting of the Oshkosh Common Council. I want to welcome you folks who are here in the council chamber to the council chamber. I also want to welcome those who might be watching us on Channel 10. Want to also welcome those who might be watching us on their computers, listening to us on their computers, or listening to us on the radio. This is your city government, and we hope you'll take part of it in any way that you see fit. So, welcome all. I'm gonna ask the clerk to take the roll call of the council members.
Fitzgerald.
Here.
Cummings.
Here.
Peck.
Here.
Herman.
Here.
Allison Osby.
Here.
Pansky.
Here.
Tower.
Here.
Present seven.
Okay, I'm gonna ask everybody to rise for the invocation which will be provided by council member Fitzgerald, and then the pledge of allegiance in which our students will help lead.
We ask for guidance tonight as we begin this meeting. May all those who participate in our discussions and our decisions reflect the values that we cherish in this great city.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ask our students to stay up here. That's it, face out so everybody can see you. Face, wanna stand over here? Look out here, these people want to see you. You guys did a great job in helping us tonight, so we very much appreciate that. So, these folks probably like to learn a little bit about you, and so would the folks watching on TV. So, I'm gonna pass the microphone down, I'm gonna ask you two a couple things here. One, give us your name, what school you go to, what grade you're in, and maybe tell us what's your favorite subject is at school, and why it's your favorite subject.
My name is Gabriella, and I go to Oaklawn Elementary, and I'm in fifth grade, and my favorite subject is reading, because I love to read.
My name is Emma, I go to Oaklawn Elementary, I'm in fifth grade, and my favorite subject is writing, because I think that writing can be fun with all the different topics you can write about.
My name is Ethan, I go to Oaklawn Elementary, I am in fifth grade, and I like reading, because I like to learn.
I am Harry, I go to Ameline Cook Elementary School, I'm in third grade, my favorite subject is writing, because I'm learning cursive.
Okay, Harry, if you could help us out a little bit more here, could you tell us your sister's name, and where she goes to school, and what grade she's in?
Elsa goes to Ameline Cook Elementary School, she is in kindergarten.
That's good, that's good.
Good job, Harry.
You did a good job. Don't go away, Harry, I've finished up here yet. I do have a certificate of appreciation for each one of yous, so you can take it home and have it as a remembrance of tonight, so I'll pass these out. Emma? And of course Elsa, also. There you go, thank you. Okay, can we give these folks a hand? We're not gonna make them stay, so you all can take off, go home, do whatever you need to do tonight. Okay, we got a special presentation tonight, we're gonna have a presentation. I'm not sure who's gonna start this off. Who wants to start? John, do you wanna start it off, or city manager? Roloff, do you wanna introduce it?
Sure. Dana Skinner is with Intera Health, she's their vice president of operations, and she's gonna have a brief presentation about Intera and the proposed clinic, and then really just wanna leave it open for council member questions. So, Ms. Skinner, if you could just go ahead with your presentation, that'd be great.
Absolutely. Again, my name is Dana, I work with Intera Health, and what Intera Health does is we are an independent healthcare company, and what we do is we specialize in providing workplace solutions, so that we can bring strategies and health improvement programs directly to the workplace to benefit employees as well as their families. So, for the last 13 years, we've been specializing in bringing these programs directly to the workplace, we have wellness programs, but then also onsite clinic programs. And some of the reasons, the two main reasons why employers will work with us is first is to be able to offer a great employee benefit. Most employers do struggle with being able to continue to offer very rich benefits to their employees, and making that affordable. Typically, healthcare spend is the second largest expense that an organization will have, so it can make it challenging, you know, next to after you cover all of your payroll costs. So, it's a great opportunity to be able to offer very rich benefits to the employees, and then also it's a very effective cost-saving strategy when we're looking at the medical plan. So, there's a really great opportunity with an onsite clinic to be able to bring quality healthcare directly to the employer's site while saving large amounts of money, and that's kind of what we're talking about with the proposed clinic. So, we work with a lot of different employers, both in the private and the public sector, to put programs like this in place. So, what we're talking about with the onsite clinic is it's a clinic that's staffed with mid-level providers, so physician assistants, that can really cover all of your primary preventative and acute care needs at either a low or a no-cost option to the employees. So typically, there could be a low or a no co-pay, as well as the healthcare does not go against the employee's deductible. So, not only by routing around the traditional healthcare model, the employer will save money, and then you also have the opportunity to save the employee money. One of the benefits with our model that tends to be very attractive is because our model is different than what you might see in a traditional healthcare setting, is there's more time spent on the patient. So, there's an opportunity for that provider to spend more time one-on-one with their patients, there's an opportunity for greater patient education, and there's really no incentive for our providers to push patients through the door, there's really no emphasis on quantity. So, that really creates for a great situation where we can make sure that our patients are getting the right care at the right time in the right place. So, that's kind of the concept of the onsite clinic model. What our organization does is we really will meet our employers and guide them through the process, start to finish, so we can guide people start to finish. So, at the very beginning stages, making the clinic unique to the employer. So, it's truly a customizable experience, so we can take everything from the branding to the co-pays, to the staffing, to the clinic layout, it's completely customized around the needs of that specific employer. And then walking through the entire process, building strategy and design around it, helping to determine, you know, not only what are the services that can be offered, but some long-term strategies, looking at goals for utilization and ROI, building in for future plan out, what types of members will be able to see within the clinic, types of care that we're going to be able to provide. So, everything about the employer clinic is completely unique and customizable for that employer and their demographic of employees. Once we have the concept of the clinic set, and we've decided what we're gonna move forward with, then we then kind of turn the tables and really focus on the patients or the employees, and making sure that we have a positive experience, that we're engaging them, we're communicating with them, and helping them realize this great benefit that's being offered to them. The more traffic that we can steer to the onsite clinic only creates a better opportunity for the employer to save money on their health insurance plan, so we want to make sure that we're doing a good job communicating the message, making sure that people understand the benefits that are there, the services that they can be seen for, and how to go about getting scheduled to be seen in the clinic. Through that, you know, once we kind of have our patients in the door, we then focus on working very closely with our employers to make sure that we're measuring and reporting, and providing a lot of data back, so that they can really track and see the progress and the success that the clinic is having. And then also using that data to, of course, evaluate and make changes as necessary. So, we really view our relationship with our employers in our onsite clinic settings as a partnership, and we work together to make sure that everything works, you know, according to the way that the patients need to see it. So, that's kind of the concept of what we're doing with the onsite clinic. I'm not sure if there's any questions about how that looks.
Sean was in first.
Dana, just wondering, does Intera staff the clinic itself, or do you use kind of a local provider to do the actual medical care, and you're just administering it?
Good question. They are staffed with Intera Health employees, so we do use our own staff.
Okay, thank you.
You mentioned the concept timeline, about how long do you focus on the initial concept of the clinic?
At least we need about 90 days to focus on that. Some groups may take longer depending on kind of what they need, but typically you're looking at, you know, about a 90-day timeframe.
And you also mentioned that we can make changes as necessary, so there isn't like an enrollment period where you can customize your plan, it's whenever you need to make changes that's available to you?
Yes, so you're able to customize it, you know, anything, hours of operation, number of staff, it's all completely flexible.
You mentioned savings against, as compared to a health insurance, you know, if we go through a standard health insurance plan where they would go to their doctor, and then they pay their co-pay, then the doctor bills the insurance company. Do you have a kind of a cost ratio of, you know, is that a dollar spent at the, in a traditional health setting would be 80 cents, or whatever it is, is there a comparison that you can provide?
We don't have a metric that's specific to that. The way that we predict our return on investment is what we'll do is we'll actually do a claims analysis, so we'll look at perhaps a year or two of claims that the group has actually spent, and then what we'll do is we'll scrub the data and look for the CPT codes that our staff could actually be using in the clinic. So, obviously, all services, you know, wouldn't be able to be seen in the clinic, so we remove and we just look at the CPT codes that we would be able to service, and then we'll make some different assumptions based on utilization. So, on average, you know, we shoot to have at least 30% utilization within the clinic, so 30% of the members using the clinic, so we can make assumptions, and that's how we can track our ROI. So, we can work backwards from there and say, all right, if our goal is gonna be 30% utilization, or 20% utilization to start, and then we can bring that back and say, okay, this is what you're going to save by looking at those CPT codes that would be serviced and transferred over to the onsite clinic.
And that data will be provided to us prior to making any decisions, correct?
Yes, so we'll do a preliminary ROI prediction, and that really sets the tone for this, is the metric that the staff is looking to achieve, and that's our job to make sure that we're hitting and exceeding those metrics.
Okay, thank you.
And then we also reevaluate along the way.
Thank you.
Typically, you know, maybe you do one at the onset, maybe mid-year, and then annually after that.
One other quick question. Is there, Davey found there's a tendency with a lot of your clients, when you brought them on board, that their employees are using services more readily than they did, I guess, in the previous setting where they had to go to a, had to go to a provider out in the community at a healthcare facility?
Absolutely, we definitely do see trends where because access to the clinic is very readily available, so people don't have to wait, most often you can get a same-day or next-day appointment, so people are able to schedule at convenient times, and if we can be available when they need us, people are more likely to come in. So, we do see people utilizing care more frequently, which is a good thing, we don't want people to be procrastinating, so it makes the care more accessible, which means people are getting the care that they need.
When they need it.
When they need it.
Off of that, how does that work as far as you're taking work away from other doctors, other providers, when they need to go back to their primary care physician? Is that transition pretty smooth as far as records and things?
Yep.
It's all compliant with the HIPAA laws and everything, that patient confidentiality, those types of issues, they're all addressed?
Yep, absolutely. So, one of the initial things that we'll do with the startup with the clinic is the staff that will be operating the onsite clinic will begin making connections with local providers, so that when referrals are necessary, because they will be, that those relationships are always there. It's very simple to transfer medical records, we'll get a patient release, so if a patient, you know, patient A wants their medical records to be released to the onsite clinic, or vice versa, we have a patient release form that would allow us to then transfer that data back and forth with the other healthcare providers.
And this would be more for Mr. Fitzpatrick, probably. All our employees will still be required if they choose to take health insurance, they can't use the clinic as their primary care physician type situation, right? They still have to have a primary care doctor and all those other things?
Well, they can use the clinic for the services that they need, they don't necessarily have to have an additional doctor unless that's needed for them. So, they can receive the services from the clinic, they can receive services from their additional doctor, or if they need specialty care, they can receive those services from the specialty docs.
And where this is a co-op with this county and the school district, the three entities have to agree on what services clinic will provide, right?
Yes.
It can't be like the county has more than the city, or the city has more than the county, or vice versa.
Exactly, right, we're in the process of working through those details right now with the county, Winnebago County and the Oshkosh area school district, and I think it's going pretty well. We've had a series of meetings, and we've been meeting for, oh, many months now, and we're getting to the stage where we're working on the final agreements, working with the attorneys from each one of those entities, and trying to finalize the agreement that we'll have with Intera, each individual agency will have a separate agreement with Intera, and then we'll have an inter-agency agreement among the parties. So, we're getting very close to providing that information to you.
Does this also include like a wellness program for the employees?
Well, actually, the way we're gonna start, and I think Dana touched on it a little bit, is we want to try to generate interest and make sure that the employees are comfortable with going to the clinic and have a good positive experience initially. So, when we staff to start out, we're talking about possibly two physicians assistants, and maybe two medical assistants that can assist from a medical perspective, and also from an administrative perspective. And the idea initially is to have, to recruit those individuals that have those skills that can provide wellness coaching initially, but if the clinic becomes more and more popular as we think it could, because I think the preliminary estimates were we could have over 7,500 covered lives, which would probably make it the largest cooperative clinic that's in operation in the state, maybe with the exception of Waukesha. Then, as it's utilized more and more, we might go further with additional staffing, like for example, a health coach, to have that health coach on staff. But part of the idea that Dana talked about where there's a little bit more time that's spent with the employee, is to provide an opportunity for them to talk about their lifestyle, and talk about what's going on with their family, and all those interrelated health issues that are important for wellness. So, the idea is to begin with the PAs, and then if the clinic becomes more and more popular, as we hope it will be, then add additional staff as necessary.
Because sometimes like with having the wellness program integrated, sometimes they tie that in, you know, in which they have like assessments, and then there's point values, you know, and if they are within a certain point range, it keeps the premiums down a little bit lower, things like that, so I didn't know if that was part of, part of the plan.
Absolutely, that's something that we can look at, and we talked about as partners, that we could maybe consider as part of our plan design going forward. We realize that we're all separate entities, you know, the county, the school district, and the city, but, you know, through the clinic, I think we're tied to a certain degree, and we're hopeful and excited about the possibilities that we might have, you know, to affect our employees' health, and as we talked about with the council, you know, really affect that bottom line in a way where it's not gonna be problematic with all the other concerns we have, like with the Affordable Care Act. So, we're hopeful that this will be a positive vehicle for us to be able to address all those issues.
I have a comment and then a couple questions for Dana. The comment is, for people who haven't had much background on this, we are looking at going in and doing this with both the county and the school district. That was sort of mentioned in the conversation, but we really hadn't identified that, so this would be a clinic serving the needs of those three organizations, getting together and other form of cooperation and partnership. Tarek, a couple questions, maybe you can give us a quick overview of Intera?
Sure.
Dana?
Yeah, so Intera Health, we are headquartered in Brookfield, Wisconsin, and what we do is we have wellness program services where we work directly with employers to provide biometric screenings, health risk assessments, health coaching, services like that. For larger employers, we also have our onsite clinic model, so, and that's where we're looking at kind of the services that we're talking about today. The company initially started providing onsite chiropractic care as a means to help with workers' compensation costs, and then from there, in client request and demand, we just began to add services to where now we're offering a full spectrum of wellness to full medical services. So, the majority of our clients are located in the Midwest, like I said, our headquarters is in Brookfield, Wisconsin, we also have an office in Madison, as well as Orlando, Florida.
When were you established?
We were established in 2001, so we've been in business for 13 years.
And how many clinics like this do you have? Are clinics of one type or another? You mentioned some are for individual private businesses and...
Yep, currently, we have seven clinics that are in operation within the state, and then three more that are scheduled to open by January of next year.
Okay. Any other questions? Other comments you'd like to make, or?
I'd just like to end with, you know, we're fortunate to have Intera as a partner, we look at a variety of other vendors, you know, Dana's pretty modest, they've worked with Schwegan County and their program over there for quite some time, and that's been quite successful as well as with some other private businesses, so we're excited to work with them and hope to get the program off the ground soon.
Okay, thank you very much, thanks for coming up, Dana. Okay, that takes us to citizen statements to the council, this is a time when citizens have an opportunity to come up to the microphone. If you come up to the microphone, you'd like, we'd like you to give us your name and your address, limit your comments to no more than five minutes, please. Speak directly to the council, and at this point in time, don't cover anything else on the agenda, you'll have an opportunity to do that later, and no electioneering, so anybody like to come forward at this point in time. It looks like the answer is no. So, that'll take us to the consent agenda, the consent agenda is made up of a number of items that the administration feels non-controversial in nature, so we will look at the consent agenda as a total package unless either a citizen or a council member would like to have a particular item removed from the consent agenda for separate consideration. The way we're gonna do it is I'm gonna read through all the items, and if you're sitting out here and you'd like to speak to one of the items, as I read that item, I'd ask you to come up to the microphone, again, give us your name and address and make your comments, and after I've read through these and had the citizens' comments, we'll bring it back to the council for consideration. Okay, I'll start reading through now. Approval of bills presented by the finance director. Receipt and filing of museum board minutes from September 4, 2014. Receipt of claims filed within the city's insurance company. Artie and Ed's drive-in for alleged loss of income due to water main break. Frederick Nichols for alleged damages due to construction near his home. Lori Lex for alleged damages to her car from street painting. Melissa Hef for alleged injury from a lawn chair at Pollock Pool. Patricia Hawkins for alleged damages due to forced entry by officers during well-personed check. Resolution 14-445, amend resolution 14-411, authorizing borrowing from state land trust Resolution 14-446, resolution determining to issue $14,455,000 aggregate principal amount of general obligation corporate purpose bonds, Series 2014B, of the city of Oshkosh, Winnebago County, Wisconsin, and such amount providing details prescribing the form of bond, awarding the bonds to best bidder, and levying taxes. Resolution 14-447, resolution determining to issue $2,615,000 aggregate principal amount of general obligation promissory notes, Series 214C, of the city of Oshkosh, Winnebago County, Wisconsin, and such amount providing details prescribing the form of the note, awarding the notes to the best bidder, and levying taxes. Resolution 14-448, award bid for Public Works contract number 14-10, Du Dorner, Inc., for grading, graveling, and utility construction in the Southwest Industrial Park expansion. Resolution 14-449, award bid for Public Works contract number 14-25, to Highway Landscapers, Inc., for landscaping and biofilters at City Hall and Riverside Park parking lots. Resolution 14-450, award bid for HVAC improvements for Lakeshore Municipal Golf Course to Gartman Mechanical Services, Inc. Resolution 14-451, approval of agreement for engineering services with AECOM Technical Services, Inc., for construction relating services for the Southwest Industrial Park expansion. Resolution 14-452, approval of agreement for environmental engineering services with AECOM Technical Services, Inc., for Quarry Park landfill, Nap Street, for methane gas monitoring, methane gas system maintenance. Resolution 14-453, approve setting public hearing date to vacate portion of Michigan Street right away north of West Fourth Avenue. Resolution 14-454, approve disposition of surplus property outlet, I mean, lot, 3 River Mill subdivision. Resolution 14-455, authorize police department grant for alcohol impaired driving enforcement. Resolution 14-456, approval of special event, I have several special events here, Reimer Jewelers to utilize Wagoo Avenue for their Diamond Dash, October 18, 2014. Resolution 14-457, Zalta, Zeta, Tal Alpha, UW Oshkosh to utilize Menominee Park for their Paint It Pink 5K Run Walk, November 16, 2014. Resolution 14-458, approval of special event again, Friends of Oshkosh Parks to utilize Menominee Park for their Oshkosh Celebration of Lights, November 25, 2014, to December 31, 2014. Resolution 14-459, Special Olympics Wisconsin Fox Valley Region to utilize Menominee Park and city streets for their Polar Plunge and 5K, February 20 and 21, 2015. Resolution 14-460, Oshkosh Sandus Days, Inc., to utilize Menominee Park for their Oshkosh Sandus Days, July 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5, 2015. Resolution 14-461, approve special Class B licenses and operator licenses. One last chance to come forward on any of these, seeing no one come forward, I'll bring it back to the council for any questions, or if there's any that people would like to poll, I would like to know so I can poll.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Mr. Joe.
I'm just wondering, I guess this might be for the city manager, but I know the representatives from Aylers and Associates are here as well. The resolutions 14-446 and 14-447, the amounts are actually lower than, that we're voting on here compared with the amounts that were issued previously on the agenda, that there was a revision on the agenda.
Mr. Taves drove all the way from Milwaukee, I'm sure he'd love to answer your question.
He would love to tell us why we're getting a little bit more of a deal on these, essentially, I'm just, yeah, wondering what that difference accounts for.
Todd, if you had that chart that you showed me just before the meeting, if you put it on the screen there, I think it kind of answers where the market's been going the past few months.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, that'd be great, just get it up there, though.
Well, what Mark's alluding to, this chart is what we call the one-year bond buyer index, so basically, kind of similar to the Dow or the S&amp;P even on the bond side, it's just a general indicator of market movement. And what this shows is if I'm an investor that's actually holding a bond that matures in 20 years, this is what the average yield would be on that. And as you can see on the left-hand side, back in January, we were at the high for the year of 4.75%, that was around the time we started developing the plan that you authorized in spring, and you can see where the markets tracked since then. So, the reason that the amounts of both the bonds and the notes were reduced from what you authorized back in spring, there's really two reasons. One is a function of what we call a bond premium, meaning that in both cases, the purchasing underwriters today paid you more than the face value of the bonds, meaning they're going to turn around and sell those to investors at what we call a premium. That premium comes back to you and is a credit to the transaction. Much of that premium we can use then to reduce the issue size. The other aspect to that is we have certain cost of issuance we have to pay from the proceeds, we always want to make sure there's enough in there, so we're fairly conservative, meaning we estimate high on the fees for the bond attorney, the discount, the rating, so on and so forth, and typically those will come in less. So, for those two reasons, we're able to reduce the sizing. But in terms of just some general comments, you did receive five bids on each of the bonds and the notes today. The bonds were being issued for the purpose of the Public Works facility, as well as refinancing prior city obligations. The purchaser of the bonds was Morgan Stanley, the true interest rate was 2.23%. The Series 2014C notes finance all the rest of the city's capital improvement projects for this year, the non-utility projects, and the purchaser was RW Barrett at a true interest rate of 1.62%. Back in spring, we had estimated that collectively... Back in spring, we had estimated that collectively, the debt service on the bonds and the notes, both principal and interest, all aggregated together, was going to be about $21.75 million over the term of the obligations. Based on the actual rates you receive today, the total principal and interest you'll pay collectively is about $20.6 million. So, it's about $1.2 million less than where we were back in spring, and again, that's a function of that market decline that we've seen in terms of the rates, which obviously benefits the city, is the issuer. The other part of this, that's good news story, you sure you don't want to do this part, Trina?
Go ahead.
Here's the best part of it. I mentioned the bonds, included funds for refinancing of two prior city obligations, the 2004A issue and the 2006A issue. We thought we'd save a couple hundred thousand dollars back in spring, and your actual savings based on the bid results today are $818,407. So, that's real savings to the taxpayers that you'll realize over the course of the next 11 years.
Thank you.
There's no questions?
Thank you, Sean.
Seen none. We appreciate you coming up and good work on refinancing, Trina. Okay, any other questions or comments on any of the items on the consent agenda? Seen none, I'll ask for a motion in a second on the consent agenda as provided to us.
So moved.
It moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Seen none, last clerk, take the roll call vote on the consent agenda as provided to the council.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Pansky?
Aye.
Tower?
Aye.
Curried 7.
Okay, there were no items removed from the consent agenda, so that makes us depending ordinances, and I'll read the ordinance if you'd like to comment on it. Again, please come up to the microphone to do so. Ordinance 14-462, approval of parking regulation changes on Sawyer Street. If I'd like to come forward? Seeing no one come forward to, we'll bring it back to the council for any, for a motion in a second.
So moved.
Moved in a second. Any discussion?
Mr. Bear?
Yep.
Just brief explanation for these changes. This came in front of the Traffic Review Board. These are all transportation department requests and compliance with or changes with the bike routes on Sawyer Street. So, these allow for better flow of traffic and parking now that we have bike lanes going south on Sawyer. So, they were approved by the Traffic Review Board for it to the council for final vote.
Okay, seen none, no further discussion there. Last clerk, take the roll call vote in ordinance 14-462.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Pansky?
Aye.
Tower?
Aye.
Curried 7.
Okay, that takes us to new ordinances, and the new ordinances require readings at Okay, that takes us to new ordinances, and the new ordinances require readings at two particular council meetings. This will be the first council meeting for each one of these, so we will not consider these for a formal vote tonight. But as I read each one, if you'd like to comment on one of, one of these, please feel free to come up to the microphone to do so. Another opportunity will be provided to do so at the next council meeting when they are considered for a vote by the council. The first one is ordinance 14-463 approved request to attach to the city from town of Nakaimai, Reiner voluntary attachment 3826 County Road N. Will I come forward? I'll read the next one. Ordinance 14-464 amend ordinance pertaining to discharging a firearm to restrict hunting from city-owned property. Will I come forward to speak to that? See no one come forward then, we will move on to new reading.
Mayor?
I'm sorry. Yep.
I'd like to make a motion on reference resolution 14-464. I'd like a motion to suspend the rules for consideration with ordinance on first reading.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Anybody like to come forward to speak to that? Considering it tonight, not saving it till next time? Okay, last clerk, take the roll call vote on the request to consider ordinance 14-464 tonight.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Pansky?
Aye.
Tower?
Aye.
Curried seven.
Okay, that takes us to new resolutions. Resolution 14-
Mayor? We need the motion.
I'm going to vote.
Yes.
We need to have a motion on the, on the vote.
I would move to approve 14-464.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, seen none. Last clerk, take the roll call vote on ordinance 14-464.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Pansky?
Aye.
Tower?
Aye.
Curried seven.
Thanks for the help, folks. New resolutions. Resolution 14-465 approve amendment to previously planned development relative to detention base and construction at Big Rig Chrome Shop, 3735 South Washburn Street. Anybody like to come forward to speak to that? The microphone is open.
My name is Tony Wilnick. I represent Big Rig Chrome Shop and ZBW.
Tony, can you give us your address?
My personal address? 5,000 Plumbers Point, Oshkosh. This is the second time it's been up here. We definitely appreciate the, the chance to go back and talk to the planning commission to come up with a compromise. This original plan was to, to improve the area, and I did that at my own cost to find out that there was stipulation that we did have to have, or supposed to have, the natural plantings. We did put the stone in to, to improve the area. And some of the areas, some of the things they brought up were safety and water quality and waterfall. And all those things were, nothing was really proven to be negative or positive in either direction of having the natural plantings or the stone. It really came down to, from what I understand, and most people I think would agree with aesthetics, the, the planning commission tends to lean toward the, the natural planning. Many people I've talked to myself would agree that the stone looks nice. The planning commission showed pictures of, of both. I've showed pictures of the natural plantings that were not maintained, and they did not look good. And planning commissions show some stone ponds that were not maintained, and they didn't also, did not look up to my standards as well. So I do agree that they both require maintenance to look, you know, presentable. Being in front of our building, I think it's very important for us to maintain it and, and look good. I do believe that the stone is easier to maintain than the natural plantings. It's easier to let them go and turn into weeds and, and be taken over by the pond, or take over the pond. We compromised in removing, removing the majority of the stone. That stone will have to be hand-removed, fill up, brought in, grass planted, trees planted, shrubs planted. And I'm in compliance and agreed to do that, so. I guess with that compromise, hopefully we can have this passed.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for working with planning people on a compromise, too. Anybody else like to speak to it? Let's bring it back to the council for a motion in a second. Resolution 14-465.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Again, I reiterate the comment I just made, which is essentially, I do, do appreciate you working with the planning people. I know this has been difficult and that, but we do appreciate it, so we got something more, move forward from there. Okay, ask, ask for the roll call vote on resolution 14-465.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Pansky?
Aye.
Tower?
Aye.
Curried seven.
Okay, it takes us to council discussion, direction to city manager and future agenda items. The first one is GOEDC update. City manager, comments on that at this point?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The GOEDC Hiring Committee for the CEO is reviewing applicants for the position and will probably be conducting interviews within the, the next month or so. So you'll be, be on the lookout for that coming forward. Similarly, we've begun the recruitment for a marketing manager, started the recruitment process. I, I don't think that group has started their review just yet. And then a marketing, a marketing company to assist with the branding and website development for GOEDC. They're currently going through those proposals and making a recommendation to the full board. So there's a lot of activity going on. In addition, you will be hearing very shortly about their fundraising effort that will be initiated. The Resource Development Committee's been working a great deal in identifying a strategy, and they've got a strategy developed to start with the fundraising effort, which will help pay for all these things, because the city is putting money into it. But it's really expected that the private sector's funds will be, will, will easily outnumber the resources that we're putting into it, which is, which is part of the public-private partnership. So we're making good progress, and I'll keep you posted as we make our way through those, through those developments.
No questions on that? Seen on, we'll take future agenda items. We have budget workshops coming up, October 29th and 30th, that we set the last time, and a CIP workshop on November 5th. Those are all scheduled to start at 5 o'clock, I believe. We're still, still there. These will be for the newer council members, these will last longer than the two hours, I can guarantee you, on the 20th, on the 29th and 30th. I'll bring pizza on the 29th and 30th, beginning at 4:30, so if you have a favorite flavor, let me know between now and then, so. Otherwise, you just have to be, have to take what I, what I bring, whatever that might be. Okay, the-
Ms. Mayor, Ms. Larson has provided you with the schedule for those dates. They're back-to-back, so you're going to have to study up on them regardless of which day they're, they're on. But we will have two weeks. You have the budget presented to you this evening, so it'll give you two weeks to, to review that. Certainly give Ms. Larson or myself a call if you have any questions. We'll be getting that, copies at the library, posted online, those types of things, so the general public can look at it as well. And then the, excuse me, the public hearing is scheduled for the regular council meeting on, on November 11th. So that's kind of the frame, timeframe that we're, we're looking at right now, and the, if that all goes according to schedule, then the budget would be for consideration by council at the November 25th meeting.
Okay, that takes us to the sex offender workshop, to be determined is a date for that. I'll look at calendars and try and determine a date tonight. I would make one comment, is that last year, as you recall, when we did the budget after we completed the discussions with the folks and that, we asked for still another meeting of the council. I don't know whether we'll want to do that this year or not, it'll be up to the council. And at that last meeting last year, we developed a set of proposals, so the people kind of understood what, what people will be looking for in terms of additions to the budget or subtractions to the budget, with the idea that if we have some idea of what those are, we could, we can do it in some sort of order on, on that last night. Also, it doesn't, it doesn't mean somebody can't come up with something new on the last night. We actually considered the budget, but last year, we had probably 10, 11, 12 of those. And I think it was helpful to people to have those ahead of time. So I don't know if we're going to want another meeting for that, so I may mention that down here, where we're talking about the sex offender workshop, but I think it's going to be difficult to have it before we finish with the budget. That's irrelevant to this particular thing, plus keeping in mind that we may want to do that, maybe the council decide they don't need to do it, but.
I'd, I'd agree with you.
I think that's a very real possibility. It certainly helped us last year in terms of processing the budget itself.
Well, I can keep it on the agenda so that as the budget becomes a little more clear, then the council can hone in on when they might want to schedule it, if, if, if they want to schedule it. Any, any subsequent meeting, you can get ready for, we'll be ready at the, at the next meeting for you.
Shall we leave that as an open question? If the one will do it. Well, the idea, it'll probably happen after we get further on the budget. We're going to have to do it then. But obviously, it's a matter that's important. We got to do it, so. Want to keep there on the agenda each time to remind people that's going to happen. Okay, update on Central City Investment Strategy Action Plan. I think Mr. Cummings in particular asked for that last time. Is that, is that true, or?
It was mine.
Oh, that is.
That was my request.
One of the steves did.
One of the steves. I'm sure the other steve's interested, too. Yes, I have.
So, Mr. Davis, are you going to speak to that, or?
Yeah, please.
Okay. A couple of things have developed since we last talked about this project. Number one, the grant funding cycle was moved into 2015, so we were concerned about being able to access the funds for the, the project. And we decided we really couldn't wait till 2015, the spring of 2015, to start this project, because there were some issues that were kind of pressing up in the downtown. So we've actually looked at separating this project into two pieces at this point. One would be a north, north of the river project that would start still this fall. And then the, the spring of 2015, we'd still get grant funding, potential grant funding for the South Shore to start in the spring of 2015. So Mr. Birch has actually drafted a request for proposals to do the, start the North Shore, which would include the parking and the other infrastructure we think we'd need for the North Shore. And then we'd start that project, and then in the, in the grant period starting in January, hopefully we'd get some grant money in March to start the, the South Shore as well. So we've accelerated actually the North Shore because of the issues and kind of pushed the South Shore a little farther along to try to maximize our grant potential. So that's.
So any questions?
That's where things are sitting right now. Mr. Birch is probably a week or two away from being able to issue that RFP, and we're still trying to gather funding from possible sources with the Business Improvement District or other businesses in the downtown. That will help make that project go that much quicker as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Seen on, I'll move to citizen statements to council once again. This is number opportunity, another opportunity for any citizens that would like to come forward to make any comments that are positive and negative about the city to the council. So again, I remind you, please give us your name and address. Limit your comments to no more than five minutes. Back directly to the council, and don't speak about anything else on the agenda, no electioneering.
My name is Patricia Deener. I come this evening in regard to, the city is trying to work with our street to try to repair it. They might have to come back because they put that cold mix in, and we're a little concerned about what's going to happen with the snow blower. And I come this evening to, you know, you have opened that new building over there for the city. But I'll tell you, if you didn't have good employees of the city, I don't think it would be looking as nice it is. These employees went and laid sod. They probably left their job to go help over there to get that building done. And, you know, winter's coming, they're trying to get everything ready for the winter. But I'll tell you, if it wasn't for the employees, and the only reason why I know is I've been at the city work, picking up stuff, dropping things off, but I'll tell you, they did a tremendous job. And, you know, sometimes they, they don't get known, and they need to be known. Some people are just getting ready to be retired, you know? It's getting to a close age that they want to retire, but, you know, if you lose your job, what happens? Then, then they try to force it more. So I, I thank all the employees that went over and did all that sod, did all the work. The building's going to be beautiful, but I think it's still going to be too small. But hey, you got to do what you can do. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to come forward? Seen no one come forward. The next item on the agenda, which is a motion to go into closed session.
City manager.
City manager. Skip you. I'm moving too fast. The train, the train is moving right along.
Mark, remember what Mark Twain said, too.
He didn't have any little listings under there this time, he usually has. What?
A little joke, Mr. Peck.
Okay.
No, I have nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Now we can move forward. A motion to go into closed session. I'll ask the deputy mayor to provide the motion.
Sure. Motion to go into closed session, the city manager's office room 404 here at City Hall. The council may convene into closed session pursuant to section 19.851G to confer with legal counsel who will give legal advice concerning strategy to be adopted with respect to litigation in which the city is involved pertaining to property located at 1118 South Main Street, the former Buckstaff Factory, and with respect to property located at 1,000 Pioneer Drive, the former Pioneer Inn property.[1730.72]